We call a meeting to order for the East Hampton Planning Board, January 11th, 2013. Anybody here to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? I'd like to just change the two items under new business, just switch them around. There are no objections. And then, a motion to accept the agenda.
My motion. Oh, it can't you do it?
Well, motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Um, you, actually, that's administrative, so you can't.
I guess so.
That's right.
I try.
The minutes from our last meeting, December 11th, uh, that's right, today's January 8th. I misspoke earlier. Um, but the minutes for the December 11th meeting, any corrections or adjustments?
I didn't see anything.
All in favor? Or a motion to?
Well, I'll move.
Yeah, let's get that.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Carol Warren.
Yep.
Come on up.
They just need to tap it back.
This is a neighbor that 19 Evans Avenue, and also a relative, my husband's sister. Uh, they have a lot that currently runs down to here, from here to here. And they are, would like to carve off this parcel A, 50 feet, and append it onto our lot.
This is her lot.
This is her residence.
So it's coming off of this and onto that?
Off of this one and onto this one.
Leaving enough footage?
Uh, yeah, they assured me at 19th survey that this met all the regulations.
Now, this property owner, they given you a letter? Anybody else have any questions?
Aye.
I know.
No.
But then, danger. Yeah, forgot our owners' be the front.
I need to get them into that, Carol with the same.
You have a copy of the A and R form?
I see David Pudrier, Carol.
Warren, L.A., you are.
Yeah, I got it.
So, are there any other questions or concerns, or motion to approve or recommend another?
To endorse.
Endorse rather.
I could write eventually.
Endorse the A and R, that's the plan.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I think the organization thing, we should see just the...
To read the forms of...
Should be a left-hand sign, he's all.
Do you need a filing note?
Not left-handed.
You got it?
Can't, I write. I read my own.
I need one for the city clerk, uh, one for planning, and one for the assessor. Those are the two forms that necessarily need to be signed.
Well, usually the applicant.
Yeah, the applicant.
One signed and my lot.
One signed and my lot for the registry. Does this draw signatures?
Yeah, that's all you need.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Yeah, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sign one.
I believe that's...
Yeah.
You're representing the estate of Elizabeth Cole. My name is Randy Iser, I'm from Harold Eaton Associates in Hadley. I'm the surveyor on this. And there is a letter attached to that, giving me authorization to act on behalf of Elizabeth Cole, who's no longer with us. So this is an estate, the executor sent a letter, there's underneath that, there is the email I got from the attorney, just so you know that it all came from a legitimate place.
The address in question is 129 Plain, but there's an address mentioned there that's different on this. Is it 129 Plain we're talking about today, or 716?
Yeah, this is 129, this one's in Fordage, Michigan.
That's where the...
That's the estate.
Ah, where the executor is from, okay.
Yes.
Now, we've never had this come up before, where there's a, an estate with an A and R.
I think as long as you have the legal documentation that shows that he has the authorization, that we speak on behalf of the estate.
Yeah, because we're just conditionally approving this, I mean, they still have to convey the property.
Is that enough for us to accept his legal documentation?
For him to speak, yeah.
Okay.
It's a great time to have a lawyer on board, you don't say.
Well, in the regular form, has a line where you can just put your name and sign out, anybody representing the area, so.
Okay, so what we have, the Elizabeth Cole owned two parcels of land. First one is where number 129, her house is, 150 by 150. She also owned the piece behind it, which is 150 by 216-ish. And what, the purpose of this plan is to divide the back parcel into two, transferring one to the abutment at number 127, and keeping the remaining land with 129. This is in an R40 zone, we have to have 40,000 square feet to comply with current zoning. We have a pre-existing non-conforming lot, but because we had common ownership, uh, we have to comply with current zoning, or they make this legal. So, that's what, that's why this looks a little strange. That's the jog in the line, is to get us the 40,000 square feet, the remaining land can go with the neighbor's property.
And not be...
Non-conforming.
Not be non-conforming, because we are not, we're not changing this in lessening, and we are adding to it, so we are not making it more non-conforming, making it less non-conforming, but still non-conforming.
Frontage is good?
Yeah, the frontage is what it is. That, that we can't change. We, again, we have pre-existing property, so we, we can't change the frontage. The only thing we can change is the area, and if we were to cause any issues with setbacks, which we are not doing.
I don't see any issues in what they're doing.
I thought our purview on the A and R was frontage, yeah, frontage, square footage.
Not the square footage. It's just making sure that you've got, that would be adequate frontage on a public way, endorsing. They can make a non-conforming lot if they want to, that's not part of your endorsement purview. But it would have repercussions for them farther down the line, when they want to do some development there.
This is a pain, but, I, I know you put this instantly, but I find this awkward. I'm, I'm sorry to say that, but it has your signature on it.
No, it does not.
Isn't, isn't that, aren't you Paul?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Then, isn't Elizabeth Ann Cole the person?
The sexy estate.
Paul Russell's executor.
Paul Russell's the executor.
Yeah.
And we know that, because it says on this piece of paper that Paul Russell is the executor.
There's a, there's an email from an attorney, that, so it's a local attorney.
Right, and you're, I just want to double check, you're, you're very comfortable with this?
I mean, I think that, I'm, I'm just basing it off of, I mean, the regular forms that we usually have for applications, you can sign and authorize anybody to speak on your behalf.
So this is a common kind of thing, that you say?
I think that, yeah, I mean, it's...
Okay.
They still have to have the authority to make the property transfer, I mean, we can just approve the plan as drawn here, we can't, we're not going to pay the property.
Sorry, just a little due diligence.
That's fine, that's fine. No, we need to ask questions.
You sure?
This is first time we've, we've seen this.
Thank you, Jesse.
Um, I'm just going off what I've seen around here, but... And, and we're really endorsing, the, we're not, nothing's changed as far as the frontage goes.
Right.
So this is really...
So it's a, it's a...
It's still a non-conforming frontage.
But what are they doing, changing parcel, side parcel lines?
Back, the rear.
It's just the rear.
Which, which again, for, in terms of ease for them in the registry, it's easier for them to come to the planning board to do, even if it's doing amendments for the rear of it, um, and doing parcel line changes, it makes their process easier, going to the registry by coming for endorsement.
No, I, I understand, I'm just saying that, you know, if our only purview is, is frontage, then nothing's really changed here, this is, this is really the same as it was. What they've done is just taken this part of the rear, and, and ownership's going to transfer to this resident, but it's going to remain as a, as a separate lot, right? Am I understanding it correctly?
This will be added to this.
Right.
And whether it becomes a separate parcel in their deed, or they combine it all into one at some point in the future.
It's up to them.
It's up to them. Um, and to, to your point, you know, the, the frontage is what it is, we cannot change that.
Right, I understand.
Anything that we can change, we have to make comply with today's regulations.
And you can't add more property?
No, not too easily.
If you're a rich man, if you could figure out. Especially here. Any more questions, or?
I mean, is there, just, just, I want to make sure that there's language on here that says, yeah, so planning board endorsement under the subdivision control law should not be construed as either an endorsement or an approval of zoning requirements. So it's on there, so there's an understanding that the non-conformity is still there.
Okay.
We may want to make a motion to, uh...
Sure, I'm making a motion that we endorse the A and R's, showing the plans.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I just want to get a few things here for the notes, while they're signing that. Elizabeth Cole is the person whose estate this is.
Correct.
Uh, and Paul Russell is the executor.
Correct.
And your name is?
Randy Iser, I-Z-E-R.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's supposed to be a good fun, everybody can just...
Oh, yeah, I mean, it was a disaster, it was like trying to fly a kite, I mean, in a dorking room, everywhere.
Is this just a three-member board? No, it's a five, okay. Yeah, that gets really fun.
One of the guys is off the death row, so.
Do you, we don't have use for these extra copies?
No, you can take them, if you want them back, you can have them.
Okay, that's fine.
I just need one for, for the office, planning office, and the assessor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Good to meet you.
Okay. Yes, I'm resubmitting, uh, the covenant on those lots that I was in here this summer on, actually in May. Uh, at that time, the city engineer had some issues, I guess he's done further investigation, and he's made a recommendation that, I believe it's $30,000 would be recommended.
That was one of my questions, is if you'd had the same letters that we're reading.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I guess my only purpose here tonight is to just request that we be able to give you a letter of credit for, from the East Hampton Savings Bank, subject to the approval of your planner, to secure that that work be done, as opposed to a bond, which requires quite a bit more work on our, our end to go and file applications and whatnot.
And harder for the city to collect on.
So the...
A letter of credit, in my opinion, is preferable. It's easier for us to cash in. When you deal with a bond, you're dealing with insurance agencies, and they can, they can step in and say, oh, well, you might not think the work is adequately completed, but we think it's okay. A letter, a letter of credit is easier for us to cash in.
Do you think?
Because we can go straight to the bank and cash it.
James Gracia wasn't thinking about that overall, when he recommended a bond, he was just sort of...
Sometimes it was just interchangeable of performance guarantee, people just use the term bond.
Okay.
I think Jim would be fine with any sort of, um, security. Um, but with my preference that we...
My conversation with him basically was that, uh, we just wanted him to determine what he felt was adequate to secure the work, we, you know.
What the amount is.
Right, the amount, the sum. So I believed the lots were the same, and I wouldn't expect you to execute it, or you could execute it tonight, and then once we present you with the letter of credit that's acceptable to your planner, you could then release the...
You still want, so, I'm sorry, continue.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, my, my plan is to, if you would accept that, would be to go to the East Hampton Savings Bank tomorrow, and get that in the works, and then either I would bring it to you, or Mr. Gahl would bring it to you within the next couple days, and when it's done, we'll record the certificate of compliance. So are you looking for us to? I just want, I'm asking... Hand this over to you, can I? No, no. Just, no, not at night. All I'm looking for tonight is for you to indicate that a letter of credit is acceptable, and then, they're, you know, the signing of it, and the, and the delivery of it back to me is obviously contingent on the planner being satisfied with the languages in the letter of credit, and then, you know, whether it happens, uh, next week, or the first week in February, doesn't really make much difference.
How's the amount determined, and is it up to us in any way to specify the amount?
The city engineer recommended the amount based on, on the work that he found that needed to be.
So we're not approving it in an amount, we're just approving that it should be done in concept?
We're, we're going to, we're going to approve it in the amount that, that was recommended by the city engineer. Right. My understanding was that between the time that I was in here in May, and when this letter was generated, a considerable amount of work had been done, that he had been concerned about when he sent you the earlier letter. This is sort of an ongoing... This $30,000 amount? No. Okay, this is, this is... From the initial, when I made the application in May, I believe there was some concern on his part, and, and by the time we got back together, he said, well, a lot of that stuff has been done.
Okay.
So then I asked him to reach a number.
Okay.
And then, just as an aside, he made some comments about street acceptance, uh, I am in the process of getting all of those streets to this, uh, city solicitor, and to the, uh, city council for acceptance.
Great.
Are there any more questions? I just want to make a motion that, uh, we accept the city engineer's recommendation of $30,000 to, uh, keep it up in the form of a letter of credit.
Sure. As I'm hopeful. Um, that we, uh, well, I guess we'll, we'll execute the covenant release, um, and turn it over to the applicant upon the release of a letter of credit in the amount of $30, that's acceptable.
$30,000.
$30,000, that's acceptable to the, uh, city planner.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I'm going to read this back to you to make sure we got it correctly, if that's okay with you. Uh, Jesse, motion to approve the covenant release, and execute a letter of credit in the amount of $30,000. Some more?
No, we're going to execute the covenant release, and provide it to the applicant when they have produced a letter of credit.
And provide it to the applicant, thank you.
To secure the unfinished work.
In the amount of $30,000?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll get over here.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem. Have a nice vacation.
If I can get it to you by Thursday, I will, if not, if I bring it in, if the bank generates it, and if there's any issue, I'll be back the last week in case.
Last week.
Thank you.
Is this going to be notarized?
Uh, if you want to sign it, I'll notarize it.
Should we do that now? Or I can do it?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, I don't...
Bar the notary. I'm going to clerk it off. Why don't we all do that?
Yeah, you only need to have one signature to be notarized, you don't need that.
I don't, I'll do them.
Yeah, initially, I, I prepared it with a majority, and then I have since learned...
The new chairman.
Excellent. Yeah, I resubmitted it with a new date.
Not a problem.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question about that last thing, before we move on? The, the stuff about the roadways, that's at the bottom of two of the letters?
About accepting the roadways.
That's something we need to address now?
He just mentioned that, that he, I think, what he was referring to is he's drafting the legal right-of-way descriptions, that he's getting, he's putting forward to city attorney, and then was also going to push forward to city council to get it legally accepted, but it can't get accepted until the work's completed.
Right, but this looks like it's more general, right, about a, a policy decision, about how we're going to do this with future subdivisions?
Um...
You have a right to bring it up after.
Yeah, we should probably ask Jim...
We haven't even done it now, but it's something that looks like...
No, we should probably ask Jim to come to a meeting to talk about this a little bit further, I mean, and basically, my sense is, they've been plowing the streets.
Right.
And they're not public ways, and that happens a lot, but then there, there can be tension in terms of, you know, city spending money to, to plow streets that haven't gone through a formal acceptance process, and aren't actually city roads, but...
Right.
...to be accessible to ambulance, and police, fire, and so, you know, where's the, so, we should probably craft a, a policy statement, but it's going to be above and beyond just planning board, it's going to have to be something that goes through council.
Right, okay.
We should have Jim come in and maybe have a little discussion about it, and I can ask to see when he might be available, or, it might be a good time to talk about that. We can just talk about maintenance on, on accepted, uh, ways.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you there, Ron. No, no, that's good. I get this, uh, so, organization, uh, we need to elect, uh, a chair, a vice-chair, and clerk. So, I would love to nominate Ron for the continuing chair, would you? We need to open, make a motion that we open nominations for, for our head chairperson's position. I'll move that we open nominations. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Before you go, I'd like some discussion. I wonder if, um, we might table at least one part, portion of that discussion until the next meeting. Um, the reason I suggest this is because, and I know you had this conversation today as well with Karen, that she's posted for, looking for, uh, an associate member, but also, I am currently an associate member, and unable to serve in the role, were I to be, were you to have these, uh, things, at least on that end, decided today.
My question is, why couldn't we vote you in, pending your, your approval, as, I mean, it's going to the appointment subcommittee, next meeting, a week from tomorrow, and they should, uh, approve it, uh, first meeting, uh, first week of February.
Has anybody spoken to Chet about any interest? That's the only reason I thought it might make sense.
And I, and I asked Harry if he had talked to Chet, and, um, I was going to suggest that when we go to the vice-chair position, that we, um, that we nominate, or Chet in, pending his approval.
Unless you want to just table...
They want to table all of this until Chet comes next, next week.
Maybe it might be an idea, because we don't know for sure that the board, the city council's going to send it to, is actually going to approve it.
That's true.
I mean, we really don't.
You just look through the cracks once, I don't know how to do it twice.
I can't imagine that, not that...
I can't either, but we don't...
Then we're going to have to, we're going to have to do...
Then we'll just...
We're going to have to table this until our first meeting in February, because you won't be approved until the first week of February.
I mean, I'm perfectly comfortable with the, with you as chair. That part, I feel we can seal, but, that's my opinion. Uh, you know, I do think it's fair to kind of get Chet's opinion in this, too, so, yeah, I think his vote matters.
He's not going to be against it. I guarantee it.
Well, I mean, I'm not really uncomfortable with conditionally approving Jim for a position, but for Chet, it's a little bit weird, since he's just missing this meeting, we don't really know for sure that he wants to keep doing it.
But, just, just to give an example, we elected a, uh, a new chair for the CPA, and that person wasn't there at the meeting.
Yeah, that's not too uncommon.
You mean on CPA?
Yeah, we, we've ordered officers in, on, on subcommittees and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
They were not in attendance. Um, I'm happy to do either, I, I'm fine with... I'm uncomfortable if none of us have talked to Chet about what he really wants to do, but...
Yeah, do you want to wait? I mean, I can, you know, wait. Things I think are going to do, or what?
It's just formalities, and that's what we do.
Well, should we elect Ron chair, or, could we proceed with the vote for chair, or nomination for chair today, and reserve the other ones?
I mean, as much as I want to hear Chet's vote, it's, we continue doing what we do based on quorum, we have quorum, and responsibility to be here, so...
And I think the chair is the essential position to proceed.
Right. So I'm good with that.
Okay, so where are we proceeding?
We're in the discussions.
Nominations that were open, and now we'll renominate Ron as the chair.
See, you have a motion, but you never voted to...
To open nominations.
Right, so discussion part of that's up... The discussion part of that, so the motion's over.
All in favor of opening nominations?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, seven.
Now, for a third time, I'd like to try to nominate Ron as the chair.
I'll second that.
Anybody else? Okay, you have to get away with it. Too many ears in the room.
I'll tip that on hold. That's fine.
Okay. If there are no, nobody else, a motion to close the nomination.
Make a motion, I'll have you close. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Dejection.
So, we will table this, the... Do we wanna... No, sorry.
I just wanna make sure I get the language. I apologize. That last thing sounded to me like it was a proposal to close nominations, not a proposal to vote you in. Am I correct about what just happened?
I thought we closed it and then...
Voted you in.
Right.
Everyone got that?
Yes.
All right.
So, we're gonna table this. Are we gonna keep doing it piecemeal? Do we do the vice chair at the next meeting and then the clerk at the following meeting? Or do you wanna just table the two of them until the first meeting in February?
I think we could do it at clerk. All we can do is check that he's not...
Well, we can do the clerk right now, though.
Right. Let's go ahead and get that over with.
Okay. The nominations for clerk's position, so I'll move second. Want to second it?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
I'd like to nominate Jim for clerk's position.
I'll second that.
Accept.
I know Harry's been dying for that position, though.
We have it for a fit, you guys. Talk about a disaster.
So, we need a motion to close the nominations.
I'm gonna move to close.
Was there an actual vote?
There's a second.
For me?
Yeah, we have to close the nominations.
Close it first, okay.
Eric seconded it, all right. Closing of the nomination. I'll second that we close the nomination. All in favor of Jim as clerk?
Well, we know we have to vote to close, right?
We did. We just did. That's what I was saying.
Oh, yeah, no, we actually voted.
You did the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're getting...
I'll say aye.
That's a little thick.
Punch, punch, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we've closed the nominations.
Yeah.
All in favor of Jim as clerk?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
All right.
Okay, we got it. So, now we need a nomination to close, close the election.
I'll move to close.
No, we didn't open, so we're done. We're gonna table Chad's next meeting. Vice chair of the...
It's crazy.
There's only five of us in the room.
Having forbid, we got ten on this board. It'd be, you know...
You couldn't. By law, you can only have nine.
It'd be a peanuckle.
We could have nine, and we could, then we could have, we could have a second alternate.
More importantly, at least we don't have an audience here for that.
I wonder if I might add on the end of this topic, because we heard that they're gonna be recruiting for an alternate. I'm wondering if that position doesn't get filled, or if we wanna have a policy to try to recruit for it, or if you've put any thought to, if anyone cares.
Well, I mean, I think if you know anybody that's interested, encourage them to send a letter in their area.
It's just kind of a word to everyone at the table then, that that spot's open, so just spread the word.
Yeah.
All right. Continue discussion of the rules. Again, following off the quorum issue, and in fairness to Chad, he was right in sticking to the three, quorum being three. I called the city attorney and asked his opinion. And even though we have six people on the board, we are a five-member board for quorum purposes. So, the fact that it takes four votes on a special permit means we have, that's a supermajority. It doesn't mean that we need four members to just be a quorum for a five-member board.
So, the upside of that is we need how many votes?
You need four votes for a special permit, because it's a supermajority of the board. But a quorum on a five-member board is three. Hi, Mr. Trump. Is there any other discussion about, if you read this alternate thing, is there?
Yeah.
Were there any other changes?
The only other change was the addition of the associate member, and then I changed, there was a period that needed to be a comma, and it was a little too somewhere. Other than that, I didn't change anything. I did watch the video of our previous meeting, and I went through and watched the video, and then I did what we agreed to do in the document as I was watching, so...
Got all of those videos.
Whatever changes I did...
We had discussed.
If I'm forgetting something at the moment. So, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept these rules as, to adopt them.
I'll move to adopt the proposed East Hampton Planning Board rules.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Can you provide me with either a PDF version or the Word document? I can convert it to PDF so I can put it on the website?
Yep.
Because I think it'd be important for us to have it.
Yeah, and then there were some things that were supposed to, supposed to go to the public library and various other things. I read somewhere in the Mass General Laws about rules.
Rules, right.
Yeah.
And it's supposed to go to the library?
There's supposed to be a copy available for the public to view at the library, and I've gotta look through that stuff and find the list.
Let me know.
I'd like to end that I'm really happy we did this. This is, I think, an achievement. This is part of what I love, you know.
I think this is the beginning. I think there's some additions that need to go on top of this, but...
It's a very good start.
Yeah. Well done.
Yeah, thanks, Ron, for...
Yeah, no problem.
Take a little effort.
All right. We've made it through everything except the request for opinions from boards and committees. There was one request from the city council about use tables.
If you want, I can give you a history or background of where this is coming from.
Yeah, that'd be great.
There was a ZBA, let's see, it was an application, but there was a complaint with somebody who was holding chickens. They, it was a cease and desist that was provided by the building inspector. They appealed his decision. What essentially, the story was that they claimed to have come down and requested a permit for chickens, although there was no documentation that anybody could find, and that they were told that they couldn't have chickens. If you look at our zoning maps, they're really out of date, and their parcel was misdrawn. So, it looked like they were in a residential zone, but they're in fact actually in an industrial zone. And so, side story is, we're working to get an official zoning map that's correct. So, that's one thing. But, so, these folks petitioned their counselor to amend the zoning to allow chickens in industrial zone. And so, the table of uses has been amended to not just allow chickens in residential zones, but to also allow them in an industrial zone. So, that's the backstory to where this is coming from.
To allow not, not just where, where has been previously?
They had only been allowed in residential zones previously.
Oh, not industrial, okay.
And so, you'll notice there's two, of the documents that were provided by city council, the industrial now is permitted, there's permitted in industrial.
And then strip the language on residential lots.
And also, it's restricted language for on residential lots, so that it can be permitted in industrial zones. We do have, you know, a handful of industrial, or residential parcels that are industrial zone.
I think I did online. Yeah, you got it.
Yeah.
So, at this point, you need to hold the public hearing, because it's a zoning change. So, you'll need to schedule that and, if possible, do a joint hearing with ordinance subcommittee. You have until February 23 to hold the hearing.
All right, so I will try and contact Salem and see if I can't get a joint hearing. Try to get it for the, I think, our second meeting. That might be half. I may be too late on that.
It's February 3?
Twenty 3. It says on the...
Yeah, so we would be...
I think you need to hold it either the 12th or the next meeting if you can, or just meet the statutory requirements.
But you don't have enough time to do advertising?
We need two weeks for advertising.
Yeah, so, okay.
So, we need to get in touch with Salem as soon as possible.
So, the 12th would probably be the most probable.
Yeah.
If not 12th, we probably, we would have to do it another day, the 19th or the 5th on the meeting day.
Oy, today's the 8th, the next day's the 22nd, and the 5th of February, right?
No, the second Tuesday of February.
And since this is coming, coming from council, I don't know if they've already held their public hearing on this. So, that might be, that's another question, is it might just be up to you to hold the hearing? I don't know if the subcommittee has already held their hearing or not. I'm not sure.
I'll call Salem and find out. Or Barb might help.
She might know as well.
I'm a tad slow, but if I look here at my calendar and see that this is the 8th, and go forward two weeks, I get the 22nd, it's the next meeting, and then go forward again.
No, no, I understand. But it's the 2nd and 4th, so this is a five Tuesday week, so we get an extra week off in between our meetings.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. It's like leap week. All right, so...
Follow-up on this. Next item is opinion for the ZBA per variance, 19 River Street.
Can I say something about that?
Yeah.
If we, if we're gonna sit here and discuss something that the ZBA wanted to show us, then I wanna make sure the ZBA looks at our opinion. So, is there any way we can get a note from somebody from the ZBA stating they actually looked at our findings?
I think they don't have to. I think it's one of those things where they're required to ask for an opinion if our opinion is not binding, and it's...
But they can't, can't they at least give us something saying that they looked at what we discussed?
What we try to do is, now that we have staff that are sitting in on the ZBA meetings, because that traditionally didn't happen until then, it's been employed, now we have extra staff to help, is that, you know, he sits with the folder, and he makes sure that they, we keep everything in the folder, and we give them the folder at the beginning of the hearing, and they've got all of the information that they've got. So, they're gonna consider it like they do, they're gonna weigh the same amount as they weigh public opinion on any application. So, they'll have it, and they'll have it in the folder. I mean, Jesse sat on the ZBA, so he can...
Yeah, and every time we read it, we said, you know, we give this no more or less weight than any other public comment. But it's also not like the ZBA is seeking out our input. They're required to give us notice. So, it's not like they're desperate for guidance on us either. I mean, this is...
And that leads to my first comment about this one. I, this isn't sort of a, I think there are times when these requests come forward, and, you know, there were other circumstances some time ago, where an opinion from us is, has something to really say, some traction. But if you look at this application, I mean, it really just is specifically what the ZBA is charged to do. It's really, to me, this is not something that's planned.
It's pretty clear, I mean, what you wanna do, to think.
It's not, well, but to me, this is not anything, there's no sort of exigent circumstances that the planning board could call attention to, that the ZBA doesn't look at in their process. That's when I look at somebody of late, when we've said, when I've said, "I don't think we should have an opinion on this," it's because there's nothing, sort of...
I genuinely think that we would have to put so many qualifiers in any of our opinions that it's relatively worthless. I mean, the applications are, even when they're well-done, are not comprehensive. You still have the back and forth with the applicant, just like we do here, where you get extra information. If you see a problem, you get answers that sometimes satisfy you, sometimes they don't. I mean, I think us giving our opinion based on what we see in the documents, when there's nothing, you know, weird or unique that maybe, you know, Ron catches something that we could just say, you know, "Hopefully, you saw this." I just don't think it has that much value, and I think it's kind of, I don't know, it's a waste of time, but I think that it's either gonna confirm what they're gonna determine at the hearing, or they're gonna find out more at the hearing, and it's not gonna be relevant. So, I would suggest in this case that we don't, we take no action on this.
In fact, every time this has come before us in the past, we've been unable to render decent judgment, because we've had a lack of information. We haven't had the people there in front of us.
Right.
And I'd almost be willing to go so far as to say, and, you know, I know we've got other ordinances, but that when they request these opinions going forward, and I know in many cases it's mandated by policy, that we don't have it just transferred to us. If they want an opinion, they should bring one of them in to present it in person, armed with the knowledge of having met with everyone else and being able to answer our questions, so that we can answer intelligently.
I think the, I'm sorry. I think the purpose of this, though, is not for us to be guiding the ZBA, but more a check and balance that if we get these applications, look through them and see something that's really a red flag, that is very different from typical applications, then it's our responsibility to write an opinion that we agree on as a board and send it to the ZBA. It's more of an advisory, you know, catch something that's really odd, I mean...
But Ron's right. Like, the other people that get these under the bylaw are like the health department, and the fire department, and public works. Like, I mean, they have expertise that doesn't, that we don't have, that the ZBA doesn't have. So, they have a real value that they can impart. In our specific niche, you know, this is what a concern is that I see. We duplicate almost exactly what the ZBA does, at least in our realm. So, it's not like there's things that we can do better than them or vice versa. So, I feel like it's not only duplicative, but that we have less information and resources. Now, they're still obligated to send us our stuff, and we send them stuff, too, right? I mean, it's not, I mean, that's just the obligation that we have. But I don't think it's either A, they're ignoring us because they don't respect our opinion, or B, they're begging for, you know, us to show them how to do it the right way. I think it's just a necessity.
The most valuable where it ends up, I think, Jim, is where you have a situation where somebody comes for, say, a special permit for something, and then they need to go to the ZBA to ask for a variance in order to do. So, if, when there's an application that actually ends up having to go before both boards, you have some...
Communication between the two.
You know...
And we might actually have information that they don't have at that point from the application.
Right. Or that you at least are aware that this happened, and you can go back and look at what was previously submitted.
So, we just...
It's just, it's open lines of communication.
So, when the red flags don't pop up, we basically just rubber stamp it?
That's my approach.
All right. Rubber stamp away.
Well, I don't think it's necessarily rubber stamping. It's why, why clog, you know, put more paperwork in the file if we're gonna say nothing?
Well, I'm not comfortable taking a position off of a couple handwritten photocopies and drawings. It's not worth anybody's time.
But my point is, is that with this application, I don't have anything to offer.
Right.
You know, so it's like, why send them a piece of paper saying the planning board has nothing to offer you? You know, don't just, I think it's better for us just to agree amongst ourselves.
All you need to do is, on the cover sheet, you'll see there's a box at the bottom, an empty box. There should be on the cover sheet that Ben submitted, that's on top with the application. Didn't he send... application, didn't piece in, didn't piece in, just can't do the letter. There's a board comments. All you have to do in here is write no comment and we just take the cover sheet and we put it into the file to, to show that you actually.
So someone's.
Because if you don't comment and you pass that legal timeframe and then all of a sudden you say, oh, we had a comment.
Right.
At least I have record that shows that you, you, you listened to it and during the timeframe that you had the ability to comment and you chose not to comment.
I have no comment.
So, I would make a motion that we officially had no comment and take no action. Sorry, I commented, but it doesn't matter. You know what I mean? It's not, it's not our job. I mean, let's, let's let them do their job.
Should I second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
How did that, that deal work over on Pleasant Street with that little variety store? Did anybody?
It was approved by the rule and that whole deal.
I believe it was approved.
Which one?
Ever Street.
Oh.
Jerry's Variety.
So they're gonna, they're gonna modify that building, then?
I think they ended up not doing only one-bedroom units to reduce the parking requirements.
Now we have one more.
You can just give it to me now.
One more, we got another, new one? Yeah, this was the, the, the comprehensive permit for East Street for the, it's the two family income housing.
This was the parcel that the CPA committee appropriated funds, I believe it was $150,000 total from CPA 50 was to go for the acquisition of the open space that was acquired as part of Mount Tong. And then the remaining funds was to be used to build two units of affordable housing, so there was a, they split out a parcel for two units of housing. We worked, I worked with the housing partnership. The housing partnership put out an RFP to develop the site. The only folks who bid on it was Habitat for Humanity. And so, based on their proposal, the proposal was accepted by the city. The land was conveyed to Habitat and now they are moving forward with a 40B comprehensive permit application to build what essentially is a duplex, but they are gonna be owner-occupied units based on their past experience with setting up condo associations. They have not been very successful, especially when you only have two units, and so they need a zero lot line with a shared wall, in, in style of the duplex, but in ownership, they're gonna be two single owner-occupied units. So that's why they're going forth for the, for the application is to get the zero lot line, um, request, or the waiver to the zoning on that request.
I think this falls in, at least in my mind, in the same category that the ZBA's qualified regardless of us, but.
I've got a copy and paste on Jesse's motion, no comment, and with a Harry's second approved right here.
So you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move, they'll be.
Harry, do you wanna second that?
I'll second that.
Or somebody else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Is there a cover sheet?
I'll get, yeah.
Okay, alright, just wanna make sure. For 40, for comprehensive permits, it's extremely important. We're required by law to notify all boards and committees in the city, so we need to make sure that we have documentation. Sorry for the paper trail. Thank you.
Do you want this application back?
Sure.
Is there anything else that anybody wants to?
Yeah, we'll just run through the green standards one more time.
As far as the home. Just, just a little update on the home bakery issue.
Oh, yeah.
We had somebody come forward. I did speak with the health inspector today, or this week rather, and she's agreed to come to our first meeting in February to answer any questions and address it, so I was gonna put it on the agenda for that, for that meeting.
Great.
Take up the matter. Just so everybody knows, it hasn't slipped through the cracks.
That'd be great, 'cause, you know, I wish the woman would know that, you know, somebody's actually being done.
Yeah, the person that came to speak, I think, has been.
She's been in communication with me about once a week. She emails to see if there's been any, that's been put on the agenda or when the board can take action.
That's horrible.
That's great.
So she's been notified.
Good, good.
Excellent.
What are they planning on starting on that project on Ever Street?
The.
Habitat.
The Habitat on Ever, um, we're still trying to hash out some fine details with the legal agreement, but essentially they're gonna rehab that, the, the house that's currently there.
They're gonna rehab that house, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And you still got room to put another one in?
They're gonna put three more units on there. That lot's actually much bigger than you think it is.
Wow, yeah, must go that quite a way there.
It goes pretty far back, yeah, it does. And so, Habitat's, they're gonna get through their comprehensive permit process for the East Street. I think once they're done with getting that permit, they'll, they'll move over to Ever Street. They're gonna start doing the family search to try to find a family. They're hoping to, I think, to turn that one into a handicapped unit as well. There's five bedrooms in there and it's actually, I guess, in fairly decent shape and there's been students that have been in there cleaning it out. They've been weed whacking the site, they've been doing a lot of brush trimming, so they've been maintaining it for the past four or five months since they were awarded the bid.
That'll be nice, get that whole thing all cleaned up right in there.
Yep, they're gonna clean it up and then, so I think once they rehab, they'll go back to East Street, build those two units and then they'll come back to Ever Street and finish up that permit process and then build those units. They don't, they're not, it's Habitat and it's completely nonprofit, volunteer-based, so they move a little bit slow, so I think their, their plan is to do one unit a year is what they said, but we're, we're kinda pushing them to try to be a little bit quicker than that. But they'll at least get that house rehabbed and cleaned up, so that'll be good and have a family in there.
Okay.
It's progress.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any other business to plan to work? Anybody on a motion? Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?